Good evening, we are on the record. I've just silenced my cellphone. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Wednesday, March 12th in the year 2014. We have a scheduled 6:00 p.m. start to 6:15 p.m. Councilperson Gajuski.
Aye, welcome back, Robert.
Ramchow?
Aye, here.
Bajano?
Here.
Buck, Yoon, Steve Osborne?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Rivera? Councilperson Waterman will be out this evening. Council President?
Here.
We have eight members in attendance that will rise to observe a moment of silence.
Captain Greg?
I'd like to have a moment for the Pickett family from Grant Avenue.
Captain Greg Barnet, Jersey City Fire Department.
Francis Patterson, father of John Simone and Darlene Zuniga, daughter of Crossing
Very much, please remain standing for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. On behalf of the Council President, in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, better known as the Sunshine Law, added to the notice of this meeting, provided by mail, faxed to the Jersey City Reporter and the Jersey Journal. In addition, the annual notice was posted on the Voltsen Board in the South Shore City Hall and filed in the offices in City, but for November 7th, 2013, indicating the schedule of meetings will exist in the Jersey City Municipal Council for the calendar year 2014. In addition to the time of preparation, the intended meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, March 2nd, 2014 at 4:00 p.m. And I'm still Mr. Assistant Minister, Jersey City Reporter, the Jersey Journal. I can certify your full compliance with the Sunshine Law. Councilmembers, folks, please silence your cellphones. I'm going to motion the table. Councilmembers, we have 3A through 3F for first reading. 3A is calendar year 2014 ordinance which exceeds the municipal budget appropriation limits and there's established a cap bank. This is going to New Jersey statutes denoted 40A colon 4 dash 45 dash point 14. 3B is city ordinance 14-031. It's an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3 Parking, Standing and Stopping, and Article 9 Parking fully disabled of the Jersey City Code designating a reserved parking space at 22 Bright Street, 24 Brinkerhoff Street, 50 Cole Street, 22 Fairmont Terrace, 32 Engle Avenue, 166 Neptune Avenue, 165 Seadoo Avenue, 196 Second Street, 417 Union Street, 592 dash 594 Westside Avenue, and 68A Zabriskie Street repealing the reserved parking space at 411, 413 Peter Avenue. 4C is city ordinance 14-032, an ordinance amending Chapter 332 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2 Traffic Regulations repealing Section 332-3 Traffic Control Signal Monitoring System of the Jersey City Code. 3D is city ordinance 14-033, an ordinance approving a 20-year tax exemption for a market-rate mixed-use rental project to be constructed by Senate Place Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, New Jersey statutes annotated 40A colon 20 dash 1 at SEC. 3E is city ordinance 14-034.
I thought you asked me to say something else, right?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Because I don't really like to say things.
It is an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter A 351 Executive Orders and Ordinances of the Jersey City Code. This adopts the title of Director, Department of Human Resources into the City Code. 3F, city ordinance 14-020, is an ordinance approving a 20-year tax exemption for a market-rate mixed-use rental project to be constructed by 360 Ninth Street Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, New Jersey statutes annotated 40A colon 20 dash 1 at SEC. For ordinances, 3A through 3F, councilperson Gajuski.
Aye for introduction.
Ramchow?
Aye for introduction.
Bajano? Yoon?
Uh, yes, yes. A to C, yes. 3D, 3E, 3F, no.
Which ones no, sir?
3D, 3E, F.
3B, as in boy?
No, D, like David. 3E, Edward. 3F, Frank.
3D, you said?
Yeah, D, like David.
Okay, hang on one second. Okay, you're not voting no on D, as in David.
Mm-hmm.
E?
Yes, 3D, like David.
Right.
3E, 3F.
Okay, so you know voting no on D, E, and F. Councilperson Osborne?
Aye on A through C, no on D, yes on E through F.
So what is your no vote on?
D.
On D. Councilperson Coleman?
I vote aye on A, B.
How about just, how about I just get the no?
Okay.
The exceptions to affirmative votes, that helps me.
I say no on C.
Okay.
And D.
Councilperson Rivera?
No to D. Aye to everything else.
Councilperson Waterman is absent. Council President?
Aye for introduction.
Well, D is, let's do them in order. 3C is 7-1, Councilwoman Coleman voting no. 3D is defeated. 4 to 4. 3E is defeated, excuse me, introduced, introduced, excuse me, 7-1, Councilman Yoon voting no. 3F, introduced, 7-1, Councilman Yoon voting no. Okay, councilmembers, now we have the public hearing on the Jackson Hill Main Street. Special Improvement District Budget and Assessment Roll. City Council approved the budget for, introduced the budget back in January. The city tax assessor promulgated the assessment roll. And we're here now to hold a public hearing on the Jackson Hill Main Street Special Improvement District Budget and Assessment Roll. Is there anyone wishing, anyone wishing to be heard?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Michelle Massey, ED for the Jackson Hill Main Street Special Improvement District. I just wanted to come down and see if there were any other additional questions or concerns regarding Jackson Hill at this time. All right, everybody calm down.
You know what? Can I ask?
Yes.
Because of, what is that, the budget? What was it, 10? Let me see.
I can't hear.
You know, this year, your revenue actually, SID rev-
SID revenue is $200,000 some thousand dollars, and the total budget is $300,000 some thousand. Like you showed like $126,000, something like that, right?
In our budget?
Yes.
That's because the manner in which the money comes in-
Yes, sir.
-there is a carryover.
Yeah, I understand, but next year, 2015?
Yes.
What's going to be happening?
It's the same, again, the timeframe in which we receive the money. It comes in mid-year. So our budgeting always carries over to the following year.
Is that right?
Because the bills, the manner in which the bills go out.
Okay.
They don't go out until-
They're on a different time schedule than the established ones.
While we look forward to you all seeing the results of our work that we're working on, Councilwoman Coleman has now joined us at the table, and we're looking forward to Councilwoman-at-Large Waterman also joining us at the Jackson Hill table. And we will certainly keep the council as a whole updated on all our efforts and hard work.
And I tried to vote, right?
So that's it. We thank you for your support.
Is there anyone wishing to be heard that got a special letter today? If not, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. Who made the motion?
Councilman LaVaro.
Councilman, Council President LaVaro. Who we giving the second to? Councilman Rivera, to close the public hearing on the Jackson Hill Main Street SID Budget and Assessment Roll. Councilperson Gajuski?
Aye.
Ramchow?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yoon?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
LaVaro?
Aye.
We have an 8-0 vote, close the public hearing. That's it with that. Councilmembers, we'll go to second reading ordinances. Councilmembers, we have Item 4A, City Ordinance 14.022, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, County of Hudson, New Jersey canceling certain funded appropriation balances heretofore provided for capital projects and re-appropriating such funded appropriation balances to other capital projects. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Mrs. Ballser?
Yvonne Ballser. I was here several weeks ago to ask about some capital-proven resolution, which is 14 dash 075. And I would imagine the money from that particular project is being rolled over to this particular ordinance, if I'm not mistaken. There was a ordinance 20 February the 11th, which I asked about two weeks ago. And one of the things I asked about, there were $603,000 that was not being used, one of them being the Apple Tree House, because I have it right here from that resolution, Apple Tree House and a few other ones. So is this that particular money that's being rolled over to 4A? It's not? So where's this money coming from?
Can you use your microphone?
These funds are coming from an ordinance back in 2008 that have gone unspent and are being redirected to this program.
Okay, could you give me a list of the projects that were not spent? I'm just kind of curious, like, where did it come from specifically?
I don't have that here with me, but I will get a copy for you.
Not to attack you, but it'd be nice if you were to have this part of the ordinance, because, you know, someone may come up here and say, why wasn't, because, you know, we all have certain needs, and I would definitely love to see some of the potholes be redone after this particular thing. I realize the city has certain, is probably for buildings and whatnot, but if money could be earmarked for more pothole repair, I think the whole city would be thrilled about it. But is this for certain buildings in the city?
I believe it was from an old building account. You know, either the project just died or came in on the budget, but it's-
What is it earmarked for now?
Earmarked for now?
Yes.
You know, this ordinance is for Berry Lane Park.
For Berry Lane Park.
What was the funding originally for?
I think it was from an old buildings account that went unspent. The project never came to fruition or came in on the budget. Don't know exactly off the top of my head. I'll have to get that from the CFO.
Because, I mean, I want to speak about this at public speaking, but there's a lot of money, $603,000, that, some of it is Apple Tree House, kind of bothers me considering the fact that that money could go there, because there's a need right now. Thank you.
Public hearing on the ordinance?
Good evening.
Public hearing. Because we go back to first reading if we want.
Hi.
Hi, Laura.
My name is Laura Scolar, and I'm the president of the Jersey City Parks Coalition. Sorry, I just ran up three flights of stairs. Okay. We're a 501(c) nonprofit park and public advocacy group comprised of nearly two dozen neighborhood and park groups representing every neighborhood and every ward in Jersey I'm here tonight to speak on ordinance 14.022, which would reappropriate 1.4 million in leftover monies from other capital projects to the ongoing development of Berry Lane Park. Although the Parks Coalition supports the development of Berry Lane Park, we have consistently said that the upgrading and maintenance of our existing neighborhood parks needs to be a chief priority. Just by way of background, the Parks Coalition's mission is to support and facilitate the democratic development, use, and maintenance of Jersey City's new and existing public parks, community gardens, open spaces, and historic sites. In addition to our ongoing community programming and advocacy like the annual Big Dig each fall, the Parks Coalition seeks to ensure local input into the use, safety, and future direction of Jersey City parks and public spaces for residents and non-residents. On April 24th, 2013, the City Council passed a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the Parks Coalition and the City of Jersey City, formalizing our partnership. Since last July, the Parks Coalition has been working with the new administration to put that MOU into practice. We have had a series of positive meetings with city departments facilitated by Deputy Mayor Vivian Brady Phillips. These meetings and the administration's willingness to hear from us have been promising. The administration has said repeatedly that they are open to our input. The challenge for the administration and the Parks Coalition is now to make that input meaningful, which brings me back to tonight's ordinance. As you know, two weeks ago, the administration released a press release touting $6 million in parks funding, including the 1.4 million to Berry Lane and a list of 13 other parks slated for improvements. This press release came out just after the last council caucus where tonight's ordinance was first discussed, and it featured a quote from me on behalf of the Parks Coalition supporting Berry Lane, saying that we are excited about these, about this and the other park projects. I'm here tonight to clarify that, of course, we support Berry Lane Park and citywide park improvements. But when the administration reached out to the Parks Coalition for an upcoming press release back in January, we were asked for a general statement of support. We were not asked about tonight's ordinance. We did not know about tonight's ordinance until it was placed on the council agenda. Although we were presented with a list of park priorities listed in the press release, we certainly did not know where any of these individual parks fell on the administration's list of priorities or how that list came to be, nor the exact sources of funding. We had been asked, had we been asked in advance, we would have raised serious questions about the city's repeated reappropriation of funds towards Berry Lane while playgrounds in existing parks remain in such disrepair. Had we been asked in advance, we would have raised questions about the administration's prioritization of park improvements across the city. How was this a list, how was this list arrived at? Where are the funds coming from? What are the construction schedules? Let me be absolutely clear about our position on Berry Lane Park. We support, we support development there and appreciate the heavy lift needed to remediate the land and develop a park from scratch. As such, the Parks Coalition provided a letter of support for Berry Lane in the latest round of Hudson County Open Space Trust Fund applications. But when we are seeing other grant-funded projects stalled and delayed and playgrounds across the city remain unsafe or in unstable conditions, all while Berry Lane seems to be getting all this funding, we have questions about how these decisions are being made. The city park's master plan is over five years old and badly needs to be updated. What happens in 2015 and down the line when the parks that are not on this list needs improvement? That is the question. Without a proper roadmap, we fear the city is simply reacting to problems or responding to politics, or worse, just winging it. We would support passage of tonight's ordinance if the city council is satisfied that answers about the city's park priorities are forthcoming. 1.4 million is a lot of money, and there are plenty of parks' needs that could benefit in addition to Berry Lane. Lastly, the MOU contains a provision that entitles the Parks Coalition to reasonable notice, and in parentheses, in no case less than 30 days, and to exchange information concerning planned or proposed capital improvements, developments, refurbishments, changes in public policy, changes in funding, grant opportunities, and community events or programming that would have any impact on city parks. Of course, we're realistic. In conversations we've been having with council members and employees in DPW, we realize that this 30-day notice provision is more than the city is even providing internally. Yet, the spirit of the MOU is that the Parks Coalition is supposed to find out about these things before they arrive on the council agenda so that we can ask the difficult questions and provide our expertise from years of service and meaningful input. Meaningful input. That said, it takes two to tango. Our role is not just to question the administration's priorities, but to state our own. At our monthly Parks Coalition meeting tomorrow night, our members will be discussing how to identify and budget for city's park priorities with the goal of providing a list to the administration. In the coming weeks, the Parks Coalition hopes to have a brief presentation on our priorities at a city council caucus and to meet with each of you, as well as city departments, about our list. We look forward to having a good dialogue, and we hope the city will make good on the MOU's promise of meaningful input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing on the ordinance?
Could barely tell you, Eddie. I think maybe there's a lack of clarity in regards to Berry Lane Park. The first thing I think we need to focus on, somebody who has been directly involved, and I want to give kudos to a gentleman who is not around, but around 1990, Mr. Donald Wilson started pulling together those of us in the immediate community around Lafayette Street and Van Horn, what was then called the Summer Grade area, to begin to look at how first and foremost, once and for all, south of Montgomery Street, that in that neighborhood, there could be what exists up in the heights called Persian Field. And let me say that, because when you leave Persian Field, there is nothing, no place else in all of Jersey City that exists, that's anywhere near it. And we're very glad that Persian Field exists. But let us be very honest, that another part of the city, you know, whether in the West Ward, in this case, it happens to borderline in the Bergen-Lafayette section of Jersey City, that there is finally going to be a Persian Field in the south side of our city. Number two, and the, and the, and hopefully, I mean, I realize I've been away since July 1st, but the BA can correct me, we need to be clear that this 1.4 million dollars is either state or federally designated monies anyway. This is not monies coming out of the treasury of the City of Jersey City. In the mayor's announcement, along with the 1.4 million designated dollars, he raised 4.6 million dollars for all parks in the City of Jersey City. So I think there are two things that we need to be clear on. That one, there will be a Berry Lanes Park, i.e. slash Persian Field facility environment in the south side of Jersey City. There will be. If all hell breaks loose, there will be. Number two, we are talking about federal or state designated monies. So through you, Mr. Chair, will you allow the BA to clarify exactly what the 1.4 million dollars is? Because everybody's focusing on the designated 1.4 million dollars and not on the whole 4.6 city dollars. Could you allow the BA to do that?
Sure.
This 1.4 million is city bonded-
Check, check. Is this better? Is this one better?
This money is bonded city tax dollars from 2008. It's not state or federal money. It is money the city went out to the market back in 2008.
Does that answer your question?
And, Mr. BA, is it not that bonded 1.4, was it not a matching requirement that we go and get some additional monies?
No, it has nothing-
Has nothing to do with that?
Strictly a capital ordinance the city council back in 2008 authorized for various projects.
What I'm trying to get to, though, there was a historical rationale for why this monies was bonded in 2008. Because everyone needs to be clear, once and for all, this is not a special set aside just for Berry Lanes, just for the Bergen-Lafayette area. And I want that to be clear, because personally, I'm a little sick and tired of every time something great, something good, something significant, something magnificent- something magnificent comes to the Bergen-Lafayette section of this city, there's an outcry like hell is breaking loose. And we need to stop that. Because as of right now, as of right now, the only place anybody can go skating is up in Persian Field. As of right now, the only place anybody can go ice skating is up in Persian Field. As of right now, there's a whole lot of things. An Olympic-sized swimming pool up in Persian Field, as of right now. So I think 1.4 million dollars, in regards to 4.6 million dollars for a low, neglected, environmental hazardous site that is now cleaned up, is a glorious thing, and to God be the glory. Thank you, Mayor, for the 4.6 million dollars.
So just to clarify, this is re-appropriated money. It wasn't designated. This 1.4 million dollars was not initially designated for Berry Lane Park. It was designated for other purposes.
Correct.
And being re-appropriated for this purpose.
Exactly.
And I completely get where you are, Mr. Tayari. As a, as a lifelong resident of Greenville, I haven't had the, the benefit of facilities like Persian Field, and my family and others in the Greenville area as well haven't had that. And, um, well, I think, as Ms. Colar said, I think everyone wants to see Berry Lane Park built out. I think there were some questions raised about how monies were being spent and whether we received the level of detail so that the council can do while it may not be Ms. Colar's and the Jersey Parks Coalition role to question funding. That's in fact the role of the council, is to in fact question priorities and to state our own priorities as well. So, to, to date, just to speak directly to Ms. Colar's concerns, we hadn't received the appropriate information. I had raised, myself had raised questions about in past park funding decisions, whether it was moving money from Skyway Park to other, other parks, whether it was appropriating other monies for Mary Benson Park. Not opposed to any of the particular parks getting funding per se, but what is the process by which we're making these decisions? And how is the council, as well as the public, receiving access and opportunity to provide input towards that? And so those are my concerns, and they continue to remain my concerns. And while, like, I think so many others, we want to see Berry Lane Park built. It can be the jewel of Jersey City's park system. We have to be able to make prudent decisions, I think, as well.
Jason Berg? Jason Berg? It's great that we are going to have this park done on contaminated property. And as much as you can clean up something, it's still tainted. One of my friends passed away living in Society Hill, never had cancer, and one day he just died. And it's a man who was just a year younger than me, two, three years ago. Now, it's very interesting that people really want to cooperate with the administration. It's a new, it's a new dawn. It's a new day. We're looking for greatness. Yet every time we try to put trust into this new administration, it kind of takes our consent and bends it, listening to the friends of the parks. And I'm outraged at how things changed for the benefit of the establishment. People don't mind doing the right thing. They just question the authority of the establishment's hidden agenda. And with that, there are many hidden agendas. Right now, when people are now questioning their authority of the government, they can now be considered domestic terrorists. How is that? No, I'm going to the point.
Something to do with disorder, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, why don't you just, it's not a park, yes.
Mr. Berg, Mr. Berg.
Put on, please address, no.
Address me in the council.
I want to address the table, address disorder.
Addressed on a park. This park is going to help the community. But in the long run, how much cancer is going to come out from what we are reusing? And I hope that 81 Garfield is in that realm, which has been off the, off the park system since 1969. Again, I don't know where the list is from. I know a couple of years ago, I was asked to get on a committee to see what was going on. But again, I asked, want to see what's going on with those parks, who's on that list. Again, I don't have privileged information right now. But again, my issue is to make that available to everyone to see. Again, this administration is looking for transparency, and the only thing I find is opaqueness. Thank you.
Public hearing on the ordinance. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Levaro, seconded by Councilperson Coleman to close the public hearing. Councilperson?
Robert. I'm sorry, as I expressed earlier, I have concerns about this and the 1.4 million dollar appropriation, essentially appropriating it by, by, by passing this, this bond. I'd like to make a motion to Councilman Gajuski. Did you have a question that you wanted to raise about this before I make my motion?
Yes, I wanted to know, I guess, addressed to Mr. Donnelly. We were talking a little while ago. I wanted to know what the ramifications were. If we did not move forward this evening in voting on this.
It will delay things. There's no doubt about it. And we just received, if, if, if this does not pass tonight, it will delay things. This is a park, although it is in Bergen Lafayette. This is one of the, will be the largest municipal park in the city. It is a park that will benefit the whole city. And it is, because it's such a large park, it costs a lot of money. And as we get funds, we've been trying, this administration has made no secret of the fact that we consider Berry Lane a priority, and that we want to move forward with this park, and that this 1.4 million dollars, which comes from funds that haven't been used since 2008, we've put out RFPs, so, and some of those RFPs have come back today. If we have to reject those RFPs, it delays the process of moving forward with the park at least six months, maybe longer. And this park is a long process. So every six months delay can also be an exponential delay at the end of the process. So every time we delay something six months, it may be a longer than six months delay, because it then also slows down other parks as we improve this park and we move forward with this park. So please think about that. I understand that maybe we have been remiss in the process, and we need to be more accountable to both the Jersey City Parks Conservancy.
Coalition.
I'm sorry, I apologize, the Coalition. And they're an excellent group, and I don't want to take anything away from that group. And we need to, we, I personally will promise that we will meet with the Coalition at some point in their future to help address concerns and priorities and to discuss those things. And maybe we need, and maybe we need to do that better. That being said, that this, we have always been clear that Berry Lane Park is a priority. And moving forward with this 1.4 million dollars, as we find these funds, as we scour these old accounts for funds that have come in under budget. That is correct. Under budget or not used. That one of the things that we wanted to do is, we wanted to move this park as long as quickly as possible. When I used to sit on the council, when I first saw the budget for Berry Lane Park, and my hand is really going, you can see going up on the camera, I apologize. But, but with, with Berry Lane Park, you know, when we first saw these first budgets for Berry Lane Park, when I was on the council, 20 million dollars or 25 million dollars. And the total budget for this park, it's expensive. And it's going to take cobbling a lot, cobbling together a lot of different funds from a lot of different places. So as we come up with these pots and we find these things, yes, Berry Lane tends to be our first priority, so we can get this done as quickly as possible. So that, you know, my kids can use that park, not my grandkids. And that's kind of where we are. But the process, and I know some people are upset with the process as far as being more transparent and redoing the park's master plan. I, I do not disagree. We need to be a little bit better on that, and I apologize for that. But this needs to move, but please, this needs to move forward if we're going to get this park done sooner than later. So that's, I beseech you.
To close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajuski?
Aye.
Ramshaw?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed eight zero. Councilmembers, six affirmative votes are required for the adoption
I would like to, um,
of this ordinance.
So, before, before we vote, I just want to, did you want to make a comment?
I have a question.
Okay, Councilman Coleman?
My question is, we've already invested over 10 million dollars in this park. Is that correct? We've already invested over 10 million dollars in that park. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
And we have sought funding from several different entities other than these dollars in order to try to fill that gap just for that particular park. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And these dollars that we're reallocating did not come from any other park or any other outside space that was being worked on. These are dollars that came from other capital improvement projects that was not utilized in order to fill the gap in, in what's needed to, to complete this park. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
That is correct, and the, and the funds have been sitting there since 2008. So these are dollars we haven't used since 2008, so.
Since 2008.
Since 2008.
Okay.
And so think about it, those dollars are now worth less today than they were in 2008. So every day we don't use those funds for something, the net present value of those dollars decrease.
Well, no, you answered my questions. I just want to make sure we're not taking from other.
That's not to sensationalize the, uh,
Yeah, I, I wanted to make sure we're not taking from other parks.
Present value of these dollars.
I wanted to just clarify that, in my mind, that we're not taking from other parks to try to fill this 10 million dollar gap that's needed to, to complete this park. And I thank you very much for that. You cleared that up for me. Thank you.
Top, Councilperson Gajuski?
I'm s- what was that?
I take it from the top, I guess.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
I think we'll have a question.
Councilman Ramshaw?
Dave, Council President?
Dave, I got a question for you. So if we, this, if, if we voted to table this here tonight, this is going to kill the RFP for the other park?
Yes, it will, no, it will undoubtedly delay the RFP. We'll probably have to reject the bids from the RFP that came in today.
Tell me how that process works, that you would make the declaration that would in fact kill the RFP.
Because when we, once we open the bids, we have a certain, sorry. Once we open the bids, we have a certain amount of time to process them.
How much time?
It's, actually, I have to look at the exact bid to see what form they use, but generally, I think it's 40 days, 45 days.
45 days?
Yeah, that's right.
That wouldn't exactly kill it. I think, good, 45 days.
Because we would lose this cycle.
What's that?
We would lose this cycle, so we'd have to, we have to reintroduce it. And then, once you guys, assuming it passes.
If we tabled this and brought it back next meeting or the meeting after that, 45 days wouldn't have expired, so it'd be something closer to 28 days, 14 to 28 days.
Right?
Right? So, tabling it wouldn't necessarily kill the RFP.
If you were to put it back on for the next immediate meeting, it may not kill it. But if you waited past to that third meeting, it gets close to mine, well, we may not be able to do that.
Well, maybe we could get an exact time. So just to, just to clarify, in terms of what Councilman Coleman said about the numbers spent, again, just on the information that was presented, I believe it was asked either by myself or Councilman Yun, just how much money has been already appropriated, spent on Berry Lane Park and getting the full scope of that, that picture, and how much further we have to go on that.
I understand, I just, to be careful with your, tell me, you have to remember, this is an ordinance, so you have to allow for the double cycle once you do proceed with it.
Say again?
You have to allow for the double cycle, plus 20 days, because we can't do anything until.
The difference between this and other ordinances, Council President, is that this ordinance would not take effect 20 days after adoption like a normal ordinance does. It takes effect 20 days after I've advertised it in full.
That's right.
After final adoption. So this, you can just, you can lose time, you know, it takes.
20 days?
Time to get into the newspaper.
That's right.
And then it takes 20 days from the time it appears in a newspaper for the ordinance to go into effect.
So advertise what?
It's not 20 days from the time of adoption.
So you can, so just to understand, you know, if we introduced it today, and we would still be very close to the 45 days.
Explain that again. Break that down, the days.
Right, because you have to, if it introduces the day, then you adopt it in two weeks, okay? So that's 14 days, and then you have to wait 20 days, at least.
That's 34 days.
That's 34 days.
Why is it 20 day?
Any ordinance doesn't take effect until 20 days after.
No, you just said the, the normal law doesn't apply.
Yeah, so this is an extension here, because you also have to, he has to advertise the results in the papers. It's going to take him at least a week, probably two, to get it advertised.
Advertise the result of what?
Of the ordinance, the adoption.
This ordinance?
Yes.
This, so once we adopt this ordinance, you have to advertise that it was adopted?
Then it becomes effective 20 days after the advertisement appears, after the ordinance appears in full, after final adoption. It's not like any other ordinance. Any other ordinance on tonight's agenda goes into effect 20 days from today, assuming the mayor signs the ordinance. This one goes into effect 20 days after it appears in a newspaper after final adoption.
Can I ask something, Council President? Yes. You know, if a city of Jersey City, let me clarify this fact. March 2009, they issued bond for the capital improvement on 39 million dollars. And five years later, over the five years, lots of parks are falling apart. Let's say, not only the Berry Lane Park, we talk about Mosquito Park in the, in the World C O D, that playground, you know, has burned down three years ago, still they're not replaced. And then now you guys say, five years later, they find 1.4 million dollars. And the meantime, we pay interest for the bond. I have no reason, I cannot find any reason you guys to rush to go spend 1.4 million dollars for Berry Lane's Park. No, really, you know, give us some kind of same manners. And prior to the other park also. So what I'm saying is that we didn't get the full detailed budget from mayor yet. Well, listen, we understand, but if we treat it same way, the way you treat your Berry Lane Park, probably other park condition much better than now. So what I'm saying is that they have an issue. We have to look at the 1.4 million dollars spending as a part of the whole programs of park improvement. We have no reason to rush. Some park wait for two, three years already.
So who should?
So, Councilman Yun, this, we are not advocating one park against another park. We are trying to prioritize Berry Lane Park, and the reason why we went with this 1.4 million is that we're trying to get this park open so that we can add to the open space. I will, I will not argue the merits that Mosquito Park, absolutely, the playground needs to be fixed. It absolutely has to happen. I'm not going to argue the merits of one park versus the other park. There, there is a lot in all of the parks that needs to be fixed and needs to be done. However, Berry Lane Park is not open yet. We need to add to our open space inventory. We do not have enough of an open space inventory in Jersey City. The budget, if you look at the original budget for Berry Lane Park, it was, it was close, and I'm, and I'm just drawing a blank on the number at the moment, but it was 20 million dollars or over. For us to get there, for us to get there, we need to cobble these funds together. That's why when we found the money in this account from 2008, as I said, our priority is Berry Lane Park. It's to open and add an additional park. This park is not just a local neighborhood park. This park is, will be the largest municipal park. It is a park that will benefit all of the residents of the entire city. That's why it's a priority. That's, that's why we're asking you to please. I, I, I will not disagree that the process has to be, get, get better. And we need to deal with the Jersey City Parks Coalition and talk about the priorities with other parks. But we need to move this forward.
I don't want to cut you, but you know what?
I'm sorry, I'll stop.
Every park is important. It doesn't matter the size. Because Berry Lane Park is the last municipal park, that's why it's more important than any other park? No. Every park is important, so I'm not going to buy for that.
Councilman, I, I don't disagree with you.
Question.
I don't disagree with you, Councilman.
Since July 1st, so far, how many, how much we invest in Berry Lane Park total? BA, Bob? BA, Bob?
That was before July.
July first to 2013.
That was before July.
No, 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 I'm talking about just July first, because...
The point is also that we just, we don't have that information, right? So, we're making decisions within a vacuum around this. I mean, and I think fourteen days, this is smart council, to provide that information as well as to how much has been spent, how much the entire capital development budget is, what are the other sources of funding that can be used for park improvements, whether they be CDBG or other funds that are available throughout our budget. And then, to be able to look at that within its entire context and be able to prioritize and make those decisions in concert with the Jersey City Parks Coalition along with the entire council, as well as other stakeholders who have other interests and other capital improvements in the city, whether they be, we had in a previous meeting when this came up around the Skyway Park situation, where the fire department came up and suggested that there were certain improvements that were needed to certain fire stations, as well as police stations. So, we have to, and this is not a blanket promise to say we're going to fund everything, but an opportunity to prioritize it and to take all of it into context. And I think you got a council that cares to do that and wants to work in cooperation with the administration and the community to make that happen.
Council President, I got a lot of things to disagree with you, but this one I agree with a hundred percent.
Yeah, that's...
Thank you.
Very good statement you made, really.
Thank you, Councilman. I may be losing votes with that statement.
It's our pleasure, sir, are we voting?
Well, I'd like to make a motion, so just to clarify, fourteen, the next meeting would be when?
The twenty-something, twenty...
April ninth?
Twenty-sixth of August.
March twenty-sixth, fourteen days, right? So, fourteen days, and then twenty days to advertise the results of this...
There's some lead time before that. Here in the newspaper, the day after the council meeting, there's lead time. The Jersey Journal requires lead time.
I will say that honestly, I just want to make clear that I will look to see if there's a way for me to extend the bid time, so we don't end up losing these bids, I'll look into that. But just doing the math right now, right now, the ramifications of that is that we will not be able to open for spring this year. Because we would have to reject the bids, but I will see what I can do to try and extend that.
Who wishes to bid, the city?
Yeah, the city.
Oh, is it J C R A?
J C R A, sorry, J C R A, yeah.
Why don't we call it the J C R A right now and put them in?
Well, it's not up to the J C R A, they have to legally extend the bid.
Can we skip this and come back?
Wait for that part, I don't know.
Okay.
So, President, Council President?
So, we can table it then? Yes. And then, we can reopen it later in this meeting?
Wait, wait, no, there's no...
No.
No need to table, if you wanted, you can come back to it at this meeting.
Okay.
If you intend to come back to it at this meeting.
Let's tell it, and then we'll see.
Okay, we'll move on, and I'll reach out to them right now, and if you haven't called them already and told them what answer to provide you, and...
So, what do we do now, Council President?
All right, we're going to do four B.
Come back, they come back to it.
Four B.
Four A.
We'll come back to four A. Four B is City Ordinance 14-023. It's an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the Montgomery Street Redevelopment Plan to reorganize content and create a mixed-use district. This is a public hearing on the ordinance, any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Man, Jason Berg, to the rest.
For clarification, Jason Berg, quick clarification, Montgomery Street is pretty long. Is it the entire Montgomery Street redevelopment?
Question, somebody want to answer?
Got the question, Jason.
The question, I'll repeat. Montgomery Street goes from West Side Avenue all the way down to the Hudson River. My question is, is it broken off to a certain extent into an area that's being developed? That's my question.
It's the area between Mersey Lee's, Grand Street, Corneliansen, Fairmount.
So, that would be what ward would that be constituting, would it be Ward F and E?
C.
C, probably?
Only C.
Maybe a little bit F?
And with the mixed use, would be integrating different buildings, uses as far as businesses, and residential, I presume, but I'd like to presume anything?
It's increasing the number of permitted uses, increasing height limits to enable the redevelopment of presently underutilized and poorly maintained strip mall.
So, where would that strip mall be?
That's the corner of Montgomery and Florence.
Okay. Too loud? Oh, I love you too. I'll do a little dance later.
BA, can I ask one item for this one? Because the last council meeting, one of the public speakers brought up the issue regarding for infrastructure in the sewer line in the downtown.
Okay.
Now, this Montgomery Street redevelopment plan, and they're going to change, increase permitted height and the use, if we do that, our present sewer line and the infrastructure can handle that increased heights in that redevelopment area?
That's an issue for an engineer, but, you know, the engineers consulted when the redevelopment plan is amended, so I say that the Planning Board approved the redevelopment plan amendment with consultation and an opinion from engineering, saying yes, they can support it.
And the last time, their lady actually brought up some issue, to order to do that, they should get some kind of certification from the J H M U A? The sewer line is, you know, some kind of, I'm not sure what that means, you know?
Michael, I am.
You are?
I am.
Okay, good.
And actually, I do have an... She lives by Montgomery Street, but not in this area of the city, which is, so when she came up and talked, she, sorry, so she does, she lives on the back of Montgomery Street, and they have, on York, and they have had a ton of issues. And we do have an outstanding question to Corporation Council and Business Administrator that, guys, I'm waiting on an answer for. But it's not this part, Jeremy. Talking about the certification from the engineers for the sewers, I know you guys are working on an answer for that, do we have a date for that?
I don't have a date, I put up the request form, but I don't have it.
Okay, so we are waiting on that from those two fellows, but it really is not related to this particular place?
Yes, I understand, but actually, you know, can impact all downtown Jersey City? So, can, Jerry, can we do that next time, when those kind of plans come to table in the council? They can add to those kind of documentation at least, so we can, we know that...
They actually, when they do their site plan approvals, they go through that process, and the Planning Board definitely is supposed to look at capacity issues, but there is another component to that, which is, there's, it's far more complicated and technical than even I really understand, but the building adds in really, for lack of a better term, outflow addition to the storm sewers.
Yeah.
Or, sorry, to the sewage, and so it's like basically toilets flushing and things like that. So, when they develop their unit and they bring in their density, that's when that stuff gets looked at. When they're doing a redevelopment plan change, they can, they can definitely, we can ask someone planning to, or an engineer to come in and address those issues with you when they're doing it, but, you know, the real solution to that is, if you have that question, you can reach out to them really anytime you would like to go through.
I understand, but if they attach some, like, letters or notes to, you know, with a plan, yes, they're reviewed by their engineers, so on, so, that increase of heights used is not going to impact the sewer system, so on, so, so if we have those kind of documentation outside, I think we are feeling more comfortable?
Michael, that happens when they go to the planning board?
I understand, yes.
When they actually file a site plan.
Tends to be in the redevelopment plan. I mean...
Because they don't really, the way they do redevelopment plans, they don't know specifically what's going to be in each building that goes up, they're just going to designate permissible use.
Okay.
Okay, let's, is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this ordinance?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Council President Lavaro, I think I got you, Councilperson Ramchall?
Uh, Candace, give it to you.
Ms. Osborne? Close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
He stepped away.
Stepped away.
Rivera?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Council President. Public hearing is closed seven zero. For final adoption of City Ordinance 14-023, item four B, Councilperson Gajewski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman? Out, Rivera?
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman is absent. Council President just stepped out, we'll give him a minute.
What's going on here, Robert?
Oh, yeah, the Council President, I thought was walking back in, he just walked down the corridor. He's absent, we'll get his vote when he returns back to the room, as we will for Councilwoman Coleman. Four B is seven, excuse me, six zero, we have Waterman absent, and Councilmembers Coleman and Lavaro not in the room. Let's go on to four C. Four C is City Ordinance 14-024. It's an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the Morris Canal Redevelopment Plan to expand an adaptive reuse district. This is a public hearing on the ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Yes, sir. Just a question, Mr. Byrne, on to the Business Administrator, in regards to Ordinance 14-024, what is adaptive reuse?
So, for instance, in this case, it's St. John's A M E Church, which is vacant, so it's...
Zero two four, we on four C?
Four C.
Okay, that's okay. So, in this specific case, it's allowing a different use for this church, this vacant church. So, basically, adaptive reuse is reusing a property for a different use than it was originally used for.
And in this case, it's St. John's?
St. John's A M E, specifically, yes.
Do you know whether or not the members of St. John's have actually been involved in this discussion? Because there has, over the past year and a half, been a lot of exclusion of the members of St. John's A M E and the pastor.
I honestly cannot say for certain. The only thing that I will say is, as far as the Morris Canal Redevelopment Plan is, it's one of the most closely watched, and you probably know this, I would be shocked if the constituency...
Well, don't be shocked, the members...
Weren't at least?
Well, they have not been.
Okay.
And at least, I would ask, not so much for you to vote against this, but I would ask the administration and the council to contact the pastor and the members of St. John's A M E and at least get their input into this whole thing.
Okay, part of the reason for this is to basically, basically make sure that both St. John's A M E and All Saints can be rehabilitated, so this does not take this property away from, at all. This actually is allowing both of these entities to reuse their property in a different manner. So, it's giving them more options, that's the one thing, but I will...
It's a good thing, but please.
I will make sure that happens.
Thank you, thank you.
Public hearing on the ordinance?
Good evening, Rafael Torres, Jersey City resident. I'd like to plead to your attention on how the streets are named, in this case, bring it to your attention how streets are named before a project begins, like in Morris Canal area. The Morris Canal area, a long time ago, just came out with naming a street, which I thought, in my opinion, should be an extension of Morris Street. And I wanted to just approach the council to have it in your mindset, to think about the old days, in this case, bringing the Morris County project and making sure that the names of the streets in the area are the historic names and that it isn't changed, like a long time ago, when Regent, Regent Street, I believe, was named when they put a building in that area, and they didn't name it Morris Street or continue. Now, you just go into Regent, and you don't really know that by just walking, you're running into a street that has been around for a very long time. So, I feel that a lot of these areas that are being developed should stay with the street names that were there in the area or in the area of that, in extension. And I'd like to just bring this up, because I know the council has come up with new, a new street name policy, which I think is great, good job.
So, I'm sorry, you need to speak to...
I know, it's not, the reason why I'm speaking about it is because of Morris County.
Mr. Torres, the only reason why we ask is because every time we're on second reading ordinances, and when other people come up to speak, you're kind of cutting into that time. At this point in the evening, you really only support...
Okay, I speak to this ordinance, the ordinance is on Morris County project. If you could just keep it in mind, then, keeping streets in areas of the projects, it's just something I like to just say to you, and when you're coming up with these projects and they're here in your possession before they are voted on, that you think about the old streets and extending old streets, like Gengeni Drive, that should have been six street and it should be extended to...
I don't think you're speaking on this.
Okay, thank you, and I'll just leave it at that, thank you.
Correct, please. This is a public hearing on the ordinance?
We're on four C, is that correct, Robert?
We're on four C now.
Yes.
Got to get you and Councilwoman Coleman on three, four B.
Okay.
Jason Berg, that's an interesting question, or just something I heard that David Dunleavy had said about reusing the properties for better use of the churches. How is it really better for that use of those churches? Can you give me an example? Because, I mean, that's like saying something so broad that you wind up getting hit with one.
I will read to you from the Planning Department. The amendments before you for the Morris Canal Redevelopment Area expand an existing adaptive reuse E-zone. This zone is intended to preserve the structures that are architecturally interesting and/or sound, and allow them to be reused. The amendment will incorporate the A M E Church into the zone so that it can be rehabilitated as residential units. The religious structure to its rear, All Saints, has already benefited from this zoning. Additionally, language was added to the plan to acknowledge that there are physical limitations on existing structures which may preclude them from providing as much parking as would typically be expected, and this limitation should not encumber the preservation and reuse goals. So, basically, what that says is, we'll be able to save the architectural integrity of these buildings without putting undue hardship... So basically what that says is, we'll be able to save the architectural integrity of these buildings without putting undue hardships on them, so that we can save these historic structures and that they be reused.
That's very good, I like to keep the community looking the same and being reused and also bring more people into the community, thank you.
The public hearing on the ordinance.
Motion.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Coleman, seconded by?
Councilperson Ramchall.
Councilperson Ramchall, to close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajiano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
The close.
Council President.
He's outside.
He's out the other door.
Council President. Absent, we have a seven zero vote to close the public hearing. Consider the final adoption of city ordinance fourteen zero twenty-four. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Robert, before I vote, I would just like to urge the administration, Cooperation Council, Dave Dunley, whoever in charge, to contact the pastor of the St. John's AME.
It's a vacant building, I think.
Yeah, with that, I said aye.
Okay, Councilperson Bajiano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Council President.
Council President.
This is the Morris Canal Redevelopment Plan, Council President. This ordinance has been adopted eight zero, Councilperson Waterman absent. Council members?
Osborne, Candace.
Coleman and Levaro, would you like to vote on four B, that's the Montgomery Street Mixed Use District? Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Eight zero vote, Councilperson Waterman. Absent. On to item four D.
Robert, I believe Councilman Ramchall wants to speak.
Yeah, Robert, and item four D, I'd like to make a motion to table, item four D, because after discussing with the festival committee, I think they want to sit with Councilwoman Osborne, myself, and Councilman Danny Rivera, which any one of you guys who are here on the, on public speaking on this ordinance will be, I'm going to make a motion to table this, and we're going to have a meeting on the 21st at 7:00 PM in the caucus room, so you guys could come, the festival committee, the president of the festival committee, and let's discuss this ordinance.
I second it.
We have a motion by Councilperson Ramchall, seconded by?
Michael Yun.
Councilperson Yun. And this is to table fourteen zero twenty-five, prior to the public hearing. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman. Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Tabled eight zero, so it'll be, that'll be coming back to us in some different form in the future. Item four E.
Robert, before you go, I just want to announce it again, so everyone who's here to speak on this ordinance, we will be having a meeting on the 21st, March 21st, 7:00 PM in the caucus room, so you could, you could discuss. Anyone who's here to discuss this ordinance, who, who needs to talk about this ordinance, have discussion of this ordinance, we will be having a meeting on March 21st, 7:00 PM in the City Council Caucus Room, so we could have a discussion with the festival committee and the president.
Okay, four A, city ordinance fourteen zero twenty-six, is an ordinance amending chapter 242, peace and good order, article five, motor vehicles of the Jersey City Municipal Code. This is a public hearing. On the subject ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Jason Burke, with the change of this amendment for a peace and good order, what's changing in this ordinance?
It adds, basically, kind of a block the box, as a violation.
What was that?
So for traffic purposes, in traffic, that, if a car blocks the, the intersection, this makes it a violation for blocking the box, essentially.
Gridlock.
Oh, congestion.
So it's a gridlock, so it's a gridlock like New York City?
Correct.
Ant gridlock, okay.
A measure for the, in anticipation of Pulaski Skyway closures, to be able to enforce violations around blocking the box in intersections.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Levaro.
We only have five of us here.
Seconded by Councilwoman Osborne. What's that?
There's only five council members here, just as a FYI.
We've been playing musical chairs.
I've been here.
I know. Okay, we, on the motion, we have a motion in the second to close the public hearing, on the motion, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Absent.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Absent.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Absent.
Waterman is absent.
Here comes Yun.
Council President.
Aye.
All right, that's it, they're all...
Yun is back.
Okay, no, we're good, we have a five zero vote to close the public hearing. For final adoption of city ordinance fourteen zero twenty-six, item four E, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Absent.
Bajiano.
Can I ask something, Franny? We already can issue summonses for blocking the box, you're obstructing traffic, so I don't understand what this is different than...
It's attached to an ordinance.
Yeah, well, the fact is that you can issue, you don't need an ordinance, you can issue a summons to somebody blocking the box. I'll vote aye, but I don't think we need it, to be honest with you.
Councilperson Yun.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Absent.
Waterman is absent, Council President.
Yeah, just for the viewing public, again, this is one of these measures in anticipation of the Pulaski Skyway, please be mindful of the changes in the traffic patterns and the signage, so blocking the box will be a, a violation, and so as to avoid congestion in our streets. I vote aye.
All right, we have council members Ramchall and Rivera absent at this time.
Councilman Ramchall just walked in.
Councilman Ramchall.
Yes, Robert.
On four E, this is the, no blocking the box.
Aye. I would like to thank our Council President Rolando Levaro to brought this up in the caucus meeting, I think that was great, this is your idea, and I support you in this.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
With that, I vote aye.
Four F, city ordinance fourteen zero forty-seven, is an ordinance amending chapter 309, taxation in article three, five-year tax exemptions in article six, long-term and five-year tax exemption, affordable housing trust fund of the Jersey City Code. This is a public hearing on the ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Yes. Yvonne Ball, sir, could you explain to me why you're amending this ordinance? What's, what's the change?
This will...
It's going to increase the amount of money.
Could you?
No, it, it, what it does is, for five-year abatements, for applications for five-year abatements, no longer can a developer apply after they've built the project. It, instead of thirty days after they get their certificate of occupancy, which the current law allows them to, it says that they have to apply pre-construction before they do any development, and that way we can enjoy the benefits of any sort of employment agreements and things like that that would benefit local Jersey City residents.
Okay, that's fine, what about the long-term? The same thing?
That's already in place for long-term, it's pre-construction.
And, and I'm sorry, Council President, just as a, a point of information, it's only five-year tax abatements that the council approves that have to be approved before construction begins, just like long-term tax abatements, but the five-year, the smaller projects, like somebody puts a deck on or whatever, that get approved by the tax assessor, they can still be filed for late, thirty days after completion, just so you...
So if a person has a house and do fifty percent construction within their own house, that would be exempt in terms of something being built, is that correct?
If, if it's a tax, a five-year tax abatement that can be approved by the tax assessor and it does not have to go to the council, either because it's not new construction, or because the value is less than what's in the ordinance, because there are some larger projects that even the, although the assessor can approve them, if they're big enough, they still have to go to the council, then you would still just apply to the tax assessor, you don't have to, and you can do it as late as thirty days after project completion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kabili Teyyadi, I just wanted to say kudos to the council and administration, because this is definitely something that's necessary, because we saw a windfall happening after 2007, when the project label agreement was passed, and many of these large developers quickly not only started taking advantage of it, still take advantage of it, so this is a good stopgap measure, and I hope you look closer at how they are really being able to use the five-year tax exemption to not to adhere either to the PEC, in particular to PLA. So again, kudos, my hat off to all of you, job well done.
And we'll look closer at that too, Kabili.
Public hearing on the ordinance, anyone else?
Motion, second.
By Councilwoman Osborne, seconded by Councilwoman Coleman. Close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera. Council President.
Aye.
We have an eight zero vote for the close of the public hearing. Can I come back to Councilman Rivera for his vote on item four E, fourteen zero twenty-six?
Aye.
Out of the room when we voted on that, Councilman.
Aye.
Go hard, man.
Your vote makes that a final adoption of eight zero for fourteen zero twenty-six, item four E, this is four F, we're going to final adoption, Councilperson Gajewski. For fi- final adoption of item four F, fourteen zero twenty-seven.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajiano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Council President.
I just wanted to say, I'm glad we're closing the loophole on this, and that we're able to ensure that, that developers who are coming in with the larger projects particularly, enjoying five-year abatements, that residents will see some benefit, and it's not just a direct benefit to the developer, meaning in the form of jobs and other requirements that come with tax abatements and so forth, so I'm happy I was able to move this, and I vote aye.
Four F, city ordinance fourteen zero twenty-seven has been adopted eight zero, Councilperson Waterman absent. Council members, we are defeating without a public hearing, item four G. You have a newer improved replacement ordinance. You're just going to vote no on item four G, city ordinance fourteen zero twenty-nine?
We pull it.
We've introduced an ordinance to replace that, Councilperson Gajewski, voting no?
No.
No, that was, that wasn't, that wasn't that ordinance. Wait, 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 hold on.
What did you replace by?
Oh, wait, wait, I apologize.
Yeah, we, it was, it was replaced by four D, right? I mean, by, by three D.
We're defeating both.
Oh, we won it?
We'll have to come back in another forum. Sorry, I apologize.
What happened?
Thank you. To defeat item four G, because that isn't in the form the council wants it anyway. Councilperson Ramchall.
So wait, I'm a little confused there. What's...
I thought we were supposed to vote it down.
The replacement failed to be introduced by a four to four vote.
Right.
So we're defeating this ordinance, this is the ordinance that council had problems with two weeks ago.
No.
No.
Excuse me, this is the, well...
I can explain the difference if somebody would like.
Go ahead, please.
But it wasn't voted down, eight to one introduction.
We introduced this last time, there were questions about building a pre-K and having certainty around that, and so while we introduced it, the, the, another, sorry, so we did introduce it, but there were concerns about a pre-K and, you know, guarantees that it was going to be built and filled for the entire time that an abatement would be there, and then this last caucus meeting and presented tonight for introduction was a modification, not with the school, but using the buy-up option of the mayor's executive order, and that was defeated four, four, four to four.
Replaced by three D.
So what do we do? We defeat this one now because one was already introduced, right?
Well, that was the plan at the caucus, so if you're going to continue with the plan at the caucus, you're going to vote to defeat this ordinance. Councilperson Ramchall.
Here you go. No.
Bajiano.
No.
Yun.
No.
Osborne.
No.
Coleman.
No.
Rivera.
No.
Council President.
Twenty-five second. Yes.
No.
Okay, council members, we have just that bit of business we started with earlier, four A, we've closed the public hearing. What is your pleasure with regard to moving forward on the ordinance, re-appropriating the monies for the other capital projects?
So I just want to just clarify, so just spent a lot of time with the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency, there was a bid that went out in September 2013, funded by CDBG money, there was a bid that went out in January 2014 that is being funded, and it was, the bids were originally due February 18th, the bid was extended to March 6th due to the weather, the low bidder came in at 268,000, and will be contracted at our next Jersey City Redevelopment Agency meeting, and the funding source for that is the Department of Energy, Energy Efficiency Grant received by the city, it's a reimbursement grant, right? So, so there's no, unless somebody else knows of another bid outside of the JCRA doing bids for, for Bayonne Park, there is no other active bid out there that would, that these monies would jeopardize that bidding process or the award, so again, I don't think that taking the time to, to review this information and being able to look at the whole context would, would harm anybody at this point, so I'm going to make a motion to move and ask for a second, a motion to, to table and ask for a second.
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, so can somebody please explain what Rolando just said, because what Rolando just said, I don't know why, can you hear me now? Um, can, can you, somebody answer, because what we were told previously, like thirty minutes ago, was that this, the bid was contingent on this, and Rolando was saying that the bid is not contingent on this, it's being funded with a totally different grant, so I would like clarification.
Candace Osborne, can I add to what you say? You know, actually you say it's thirty minutes ago, and what they present to council, and what council present to find is totally two different. what council president find is totally two different. So in other words, if somebody misread this council, I wanna ask accountability for the part of it.
So can somebody tell us, is there a bid that came in?
Yeah, I think that this is the bid. I believe, I don't know any of the specifics about it. All I was told is that there is a bid that they're trying to fund. But I believe this bid is, does have a reimbursement grant, but the initial funds have to be outlaid. So if the JCRNA is, if Tori Rolando, they're willing to fund that through some other account, and they have funds available for that, then, then, then it's true. But if they don't have the $250,000 sitting there to fund it, then, then they need the funds. It's, it's not really that complicated.
I'm still not clear. I'm still not clear, because I don't understand $1.4 million to satisfy a bid if the bid was only $200,000. To me, that doesn't make sense either. So I'm not clear on what this money, I don't think this money was for a bid at all. If you, I thought the bid money was already covered, and that was for laying down the foundation of the light. So I'm not clear either. I'd like to be clear.
So Kekko's saying that, yeah, if they, if you guys want to not use those funds, he can fund, he can fund the money somewhere else, and he can grant, he can, he can fund the grant.
That's not answering our question, though. That's not the question that we asked.
Council President just asked me about a Department of Energy grant, so I reached out to our CFO, who did inform me, there was a Department of Energy grant out there that has to be spent by the end of May, or we lose it. Apparently, the agreement was to fund lighting, which I guess is part of the bids that were just received, for the Berry Lane Park. So this, what's out to bid will be funded not by this 1.4, but will be funded by a Department of Energy grant.
Right. By another source, not this.
Yes, and I apologize for me creating that confusion, but I was, I was privy to another conversation, and what I took from that conversation, Council President, what I took from that conversation was that these were absolutely connected. So I apologize for, for, because it was, it was not, it was certainly not, I would never purposely misrepresent something.
Understand.
My reputation is important to this council. I want you to be able to trust me. I would never do that in a purposeful manner, so I hope you know that.
I'm not suggesting that it is, and I, I'm glad we cleared that up. Okay?
So you make motion to table?
Yeah, motion to table.
I say second.
We have a motion to table. I'm still confused.
Are you okay?
14.
I'm sorry, Frank, go ahead. Councilman.
Councilman Gajewski, I have a question as well. Usually, we work these things out in the caucus, and I noticed that this is, this is the second reading, so now we're really confused, because I thought we were going forward with this, but now issues came up in the last couple of days questioning the money and whether the, the funding, it was, it was a communication issue. Where is the funding for the rest of the parks? Because we're all concerned, I've been lobbying for parks up in Ward A, and I know everybody else that's a Ward councilperson, plus, plus the I Lodge have been lobbying, and there's, there's some sort of miscommunication where we don't have the exact information as to when that's gonna get done and where the funding is coming from.
So I, so I just spoke with Ben Delisle from the JCRNA, and so one of the, one of the things that we just discussed was what this 1.4 is for. We do need to create a process, and we need, and we need to get better about that, and we need to have a broader conversation about that, absolutely. And I, I will not deny that, and we need to sit down and talk about that. That has to be part of a whole sustainability issue within the entire city of where these funds come from and how we do that. This I do know. Whether it's today or tomorrow, to finish Berry Lane Park, we're going to need this $1.4 million plus more. We are not anywhere near, we've spent, I can't give you the exact figure, but we've spent about $10 million or so on the park. We are not near the $20 million, we are not near the $20 million. This $1.4 million, I just asked Ben Delisle, will fund phase four of the project. That much I do know, and that those bid specs will go out in the next 60 days.
Well, I just wanna say.
So, so therefore, so therefore, whether you table it or not, and I beseech you that you don't, but whether you table it or not, that we're still going to have to get to $20 million at some point to get this park open, to get this park in working order, to get to that $20 million to make this park work. So that's, that's what, that's what I am asking.
Well, I would like to add to that comment, that I think this might have been approved tonight if it hadn't come to the confusion of us being pressed up against the wall to approve dollars for a bid already. And I'm not finished yet, so let me finish, because Berry Lane Park is in Ward F, and before I even became councilor, and we were fighting to get that park developed, and everyone in here and in that area knows that that's a very, very important number-one priority for this administration. However, what happens is when you present it to the community, the way it's been presented tonight, it makes confusion, and it makes a problem that you're afraid, people are afraid to vote or to say they wanna vote for, even though we know Berry Lane Park is a priority. So it, I think it could have been voted on if this had have been presented that way in the first place, instead of the way it was presented, that we were being pushed against the deadline to vote on a bid that had already gone out. So it, it needs to be relooked now. So I would be surprised if what they were.
And I, and I think Dave's already apologized. I don't think there's any need to beat Dave up for it. What I will say is this is second reading, and we didn't put this the way we normally would, because we didn't hear any issues at caucus first reading. We didn't hear any issues at.
Back to the, go back to the tape.
We didn't hear any issues.
Back to the tape. You'll hear the, you'll hear the, the expressions of concerns, and I can, I mean, Councilman Yoon was the most vocal about that at that time.
Yeah, you, I mean, there were some, but they weren't vociferous. And the other thing is, I had, we had Franklin Orr there from the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency, who literally sat in the last caucus meeting for three hours, and nobody asked him to come forward or ask, or ask a question at the last time. So again, I, I apologize for, but the miscommunication was a misunderstanding on my part. And Councilwoman Coleman, I, I apologize again.
We table it, and we can revisit this.
Because this is a priority for me, and now because of the confusion, because of the confusion.
I understand.
Ward F is going to suffer, because this is gonna be tabled, because it looks shady, and it's not. If it had been explained properly in the first place, it would have never gotten to this point. So I'm a little upset about that, because my community deserves Berry Lane Park.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion, I have a motion by the council president, seconded by Councilman Yoon.
Yes.
This is to table, city ordinance 14022, item 4A, after the close of the public hearing.
Frank wanted to talk.
Okay.
I still have, still want to create a.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
If we table it, what is the effect?
Nothing.
Zero.
Nothing.
We can bring it up, there's no, there's no.
Problem, and everybody's talking.
It's not being adopted tonight. If you table it, we go down and take the list whenever you're ready.
What?
But are we, not in two weeks.
Yeah, if you table it, you have to vote it off the table list, and you could do that in two weeks or whenever you're ready. Okay?
So we're not gonna lose the project?
No, you're okay.
So Frank, we, yes, fine. We just wanna make sure they provide the right information on the table, that's all.
Michael is very confusing.
I know that.
On the motion to table, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano. Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Before I take my vote, I just kinda wanna say, there were comments about, you know, engaging and involving the Parks Coalition, and I appreciate that. I think there's also an opportunity to engage the council, and.
Thank you very much.
You know, it's, it's happened several times, and, and we've talked about it before, and we've let you, we've said, okay, we'll pass it this time, we'll pass it this time. And so I hope that we can be partners in this type of stuff moving forward, and with that, I vote aye.
Councilperson Coleman? Table.
Well, Berry Lane Park is very important to me, and I have worked very hard with the administration, but it's not my job to go around and say whether there's a bid out and advise. As long as I'm clear and the right facts are presented to the council, there wouldn't be any confusion. And right this minute, Berry Lane Park is one of the priorities of the administration, and also of mine, and I cannot vote no. I have to vote aye on this.
Councilperson Rivera?
No to table.
Council President.
So let me just say that looking forward to the opportunity to be able to sit down and, and work together with the administration and the Parks Coalition and others to establish priorities around our funding. We're going through the budget process. It doesn't, for this particular purpose, it doesn't need to last that long. I share the priority, and I, and with the mayor and Councilman Coleman, that Berry Lane Park can be a jewel for the city, and can be the center of the city and our, and our whole park system in that, in that regard. At the same time, we, it is incumbent upon us as councilpeople to do our due diligence, to service checks and balances, and to make sure that there's, that we have the full picture and context, so that we can make informed decisions. I applaud Councilwoman Coleman as a Ward Councilman. It's her job to advocate and make sure that Ward F gets all the resources it can get, and it's certainly been underserved for far, far, far too long. And so I applaud her for, for, her energy and vigor in doing that. And my job as Councilman at large is also to balance the interests of our people throughout the city. So in order to do that, I think it's important for us to have the whole picture, and to be able to see all of the capital improvement funds, all of the sources of funding that can fund parks and other, other capital improvement projects throughout the city, and then to make prudent decisions and prioritize accordingly. With that, I vote yes to table.
I'm sorry, Robert, I voted, I voted yes to table it, I meant yes for it. So I, I'm sorry. Could you fix my, could you fix my vote for me?
You're voting no to table.
Yes, that's what I meant. Thank you.
All right, so it's a 6-2 vote to table. Councilperson Waterman.
Whoa. What's wrong?
Is.
It's tabled.
It's tabled.
It's tabled, 6-2. Council members, Coleman and Rivera voting no. Councilperson Waterman absent. Okay, Jamie Vasquez?
Jamie, change.
Hi, Mr. Doherty.
William Doherty, 3060 Kennedy Boulevard.
Go ahead, please, Mr. Doherty.
William.
Yeah, you have the Oprah request, you all have them now. Just make some comments. Tyrone Hodge gave me some information. March 3, 2014 was the enforcement day for 24/7 security guard code. And number one, the fines ought to be what implemented when? Daily, weekly? Number two, it's a law. Why even discuss something that should be enforced? Number three, fines are implemented how? Three, this is James Shay has to do all this. Technically, fines should be prorated for 30 years. 30 years, this landlord has, as my complaint. All right. All right. Steve Phillips, you are a Marine. Get some style. Do not back down from the multi-billionaire landlord lobby. Stand your ground with these bastards. Diane Coleman, a woman was murdered in broad daylight in your building, 100 Montgomery Street. Take some responsibility. Come out from beneath the shadow, Steve Phillips' shadow. Take some responsibility. I've been informed by Peter Bassel that March 3, was it the enforcement, or was it for the landlord to get the paperwork in, and it will be a little long? Well, that may be the case, if you want, but I, I thought it was for code enforcement, and the Grammy L.A. would be fine. There's no, there's no security guard at the Grammy now. It's a week later, and we don't know what's gonna happen. But we do urge Rolando LaBarro, if you could move the ball forward, and also Steve Phillips, so I mean, so I don't know how we're gonna do this, but my, my gut feeling is, in the next couple of weeks, we will have 24/7 security guards. And I understand James Shay has to issue the code violations. Now, here it is, the buck stops here at Steve Phillips. He's the boss. You know, you can call James Shay on the carpet. You know, yeah, fine this bastard, right? And James Shay says, no, he's a car marshal, he's a Marine. I mean, you don't disobey a direct order, you know? So, but that's, that's the pecking order in the food chain. And thank you very much, Rolando LaBarro, for putting this on the table in the first place. I think in the next couple of weeks, we'll get the job done. But as we now stand, James Shay, we don't know what he's doing, or we, he has not even responded to the Oprah request from the city. The only one that responded on that list was Charlie O'Day. James Shay has not responded, and we don't know why, but some amiss.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Doherty. So just Director Shay, he's, he's doing a great job for the city, but we'll follow up with him, and we'll work with him to see what's, what the next follow-up actions will be, okay?
Okay. Next speaker is Laverne Washington.
Hi.
Laverne is not here. Gary Greenberg is here.
Hello, everyone. I'm Gary Greenberg, Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Hudson County. My second hat, I am the lead founder of the Great Futures Charter High School for the Health Sciences. I'm here to talk to you about Great Futures Charter High School this evening first. I just would like to inform the entire community that this is a charter high school for the Health Sciences that is partnering with the Jersey City Medical Center and Barnabas Health Systems. It is, the purpose of the school is to prepare our high school students to advance into college, and then into the health science, into the variety of health science careers. It's gonna provide a pathway, a career pathway, for young people in our community to go to college, come back, and work in the very same community, in the Jersey City Medical Center and other healthcare facilities, in three different major categories. One would be administration, two would be certification, technology, and the third would be a clinical track. So there's gonna be a total of 500 students. We're accepting 125 students that are scheduled to open this September. We have most, but we've gotten a very good response citywide, I have to say. We have most of 125 kids signed up. We're establishing a waiting list, and it's really, it's been a wonderful opportunity, partnering with experts in creating a model, an ideal model, to help our children to become successful in life. So I wanted to announce this to the entire community, that we wanna make our kids workforce ready, so when they get out of high school, they're not just wandering without the support systems to help take them to the next step. So we pledge, as Great Futures Charter High School, a program of the Boys and Girls Club, to take our eighth graders and help transition them and carry, and help them through high school, so they can make the decisions and establish priorities and be able to be workforce-ready. And that's what's most important. Second, as, as Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Clubs, I just wanted to invite the community at large and members of the city council. Every year, we have a dinner at the Liberty House in memory of a great man who served here in Jersey City, and his name is, was Brian Doherty, who was a real estate attorney, but more than that, he was really a philanthropist that supported many families, many people, many agencies, and institutions here in Jersey City, before he passed away, probably it's about 11 years ago. So his widow, Rosemary McFadden, has given the Boys and Girls Club the opportunity these last 11 years in honoring the memory of Brian, and by giving out community service awards in his memory. And this year, we're gonna be honoring Mayor Steve Phillips, as well as Superintendent of Schools, Marshall Lyles. So I would like to invite the community at large and members of the city council to come that night. It's April 1st at the Liberty House at 5:30. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Peter McHartland.
Not to table.
Not present. David Sanders.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is David Sanders. For those of you who don't know, I went to Lincoln High School. I graduated from Jersey City State College. My family's been here since 1919 continuously, so my great-grandfather moved here. Between the months of August 2013 and February 2014, I was the supervisor at the Community Awareness Series of the Jersey City Free Public Library. I have a handout for the council. The Community Awareness Series, as you know, is a department of the Jersey City Free Public Library. We provide cultural enrichment and arts programs citywide. I'd like to thank the council for your support. Many of you came to our programs and showed support. The community appreciated that, we appreciated that. You got a chance to see the magic of what we do. And I'd like to take an opportunity to tell you that we had a great year thanks to your support. I'm going to just read quickly some 2013 highlights. We did 58 events in Jersey City, 7,500-plus participants in 15 locations citywide. We were at the Miller Branch, A. Harry Moore, MLK Plaza, PS 23, PS 11, the Bethune Center, PS 15, Infinity High School, Five Corners Branch of the library, Soaring Heights High School, Senior Spirit Center, Greenville Branch of the library, the Heights Branch, the Main Library, and the Cunningham Branch. Thank you very much. You and the people and the mayor's administration made that possible. We're very thankful. I'd also like to quickly talk about your continued support. In 2014, we have great plans. We'd like to do everything that we did and more. We have things among our many things planned. We'd like to do a tribute to Pete Seeger and Odetta, who both passed last year, and who both performed at the Community Awareness Series in the past. For those of you who wonder what types of art and music we do, we do jazz, reggae, gospel, R&B, pop, salsa, African Indian, Philippine, Polynesian, folk, and classical, all in 2013. We presented music, dance, poetry, painting, photography, videography, storytelling, visual arts, and performance arts, all in 2013. We engaged over 150 artists. We had a featured artist of Lou Donaldson, who's a National Endowment for the Arts 2013 Jazz Master awardee. What else we can do for the city of Jersey City is help bring some arts, more arts recognition to Jersey City. Our founder and creative consultant, David Williams, is being honored internationally often. This year, he'll be recorded at the Sorbonne in Paris. He has access to a lot of international stars. He's really got an amazing track record. I don't have time to list all of his great historical performances, but there are quite a few. Also, we help identify young artists. We have a strong history of helping out young artists, giving them a space to perform, and we've had some great success with that. Also, I mentioned our diversity in the arts. And basically, I would just like to, again, thank the council for your support, thank the mayor's administration, and thank the people of Jersey City for supporting us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yvonne Ball, sir?
I need to say something.
Mr. Sanders.
Yeah, Mr. Sanders. Yvonne, just one minute. Just want to let you know the Miller Branch Library is in my ward, Ward B, which borderline from Councilman Coleman. We both go to the library. And it's a great program, and I always support the Miller Branch Library because I go there myself. I actually was there last Saturday night. It's very good.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And we have an event coming up this Saturday at Five Corners, Polynesian Music. You're all invited. Thank you.
Hi.
Sorry, Yvonne.
Yvonne Ball, so before I start, I want you to know there is a major pothole near PS 29, Rose and Claremont, that was supposed to be filled two days ago. Part of the reason why I came here early is that we have a tremendous amount of potholes, and we have, quote, all this excess money, you know, moving accounts around. I want to see some potholes filled up, for they damage my car, to be very honest. Now, to get back to what I spoke earlier, I talked about Resolution 10C, which was 14-075, which appeared on February 17. I was not able to attend. The city capital fund is totaled $603,000 and is a figure for, of $18,500 for the Apple Treehouse. Now, according to this resolution, this is money not being needed. And I see it's excess money from the Veterans Park, infrastructure improvement, Olympic Construction, parking lot, Waller Street surface, Apple Treehouse. I mean, there's money here, and it really annoys me because the Apple Treehouse has been out there since 1989, not being done, and there's money here that we're going to take from the Apple Treehouse and put it someplace else. Why are we doing that? I mean, every time I look in the paper, there's a politician taking a picture of the Apple Treehouse saying that we're going to preserve it. Yet when I read the stuff, we're transferring money from the city that was for that project. It's excess money, but nothing is excess if you have it for the Apple Treehouse. So I want to see either money used for what should be used, or let's fill up some potholes. Now, you're talking about parks. And now we're living in Journal Square. Where are some parks for Journal Square? To be very honest, let's take Senate Street and make it into a park. I'm really annoyed that, you know, where you have children at in the area, where you have a very tight community, took them out planting. It's the planning board asleep. You're putting all these buildings, not enough open green space. I'm annoyed by that. You know, talking about the planning department, and all of you received my email, thank you if you read it, the email was about the traffic near 25 Senate Place, which has not been passed. I'm quite sure we'll come back in two weeks. You have Charlotte Circle, Route 1, you have the Skyway, you have so much. So when the developer came to the meeting in which Councilman Bojana was there, the question I asked over again, why didn't the planning office demand a study of traffic? My garage is on St. Paul's Avenue. You have 128 planned parking spaces. There's 266 developments for the people. They're going to be going around the street, adding more and more traffic to the area. And I don't understand why, in the area, everyone has seen the map, yet why is the planning board not doing traffic studies? I find that amazing. This is the same planning board, by the way, with Bob Carter, who said there were no problems to put the hospital down at the foot of Jersey Avenue. This is the same man that made that prediction when I came to a meeting in the 80s, saying you're going to have problems with traffic, and I was told, no. So I don't have much faith in this planning office at all. I want to see the planning department to put in studies of traffic for the city. Because you know what? People do have cars. Forget about everyone going to take the path. They do have cars. I remember my son living home, having a car, and he didn't have an apartment yet, but he had a car, one minute left. Okay, I would like to know about that funding. Where will that money go to? Could someone please tell me? Because really, if you're going to take pictures of the Apple Treehouse, then let's take some of that money and let's spend it. So if I can have, that money could be followed. I mean, I don't want to go to someplace else. I want to go either to the Apple Treehouse, or I want to go to fill potholes in the city. Are you going to respond to that? Sure. I'm complete, yes.
What was posted as a reference is Resolution...
There's only one microphone?
You can see here. You can borrow that one.
The document that's being referred to was a page from the corrective action plan that was attached to a resolution back in February. And what that page said was a recommendation or a finding from our auditors saying there were some old balances for projects that were completed, and what they were recommending is that the city take action either to cancel, you know, the balances and reappropriate them. No action's been taken yet. The council hasn't been asked to take any action. It's just money from older projects, and she lists a few of them. She's like eight of them on this list. These are old projects from 10 years ago, five years ago. The auditor is just saying to clean up the books, cancel those balances as the project's over, and then do something with the money. So nothing's being done yet.
Thank you very much.
Did someone leave something in the ladies' room? A phone?
Phone's wallet.
Phone, wallet?
Keys.
All the phones.
Dolores.
Dolores Black.
Here, the phone and the wallet in the ladies' room, and your keys. Raise your phone.
Okay, just like my wife.
Thank you, cooperation council. Good Samaritan.
John Zabrowski is not here. Boris Peters. Boris Peters.
Jeremy, wait, what's the name?
Peter Nowak. Jerry Bellinger Murphy. Mary Ellen Liddy.
Oh, Cheryl, Cheryl Murphy is here.
Cheryl Murphy.
Here.
Fifty-four.
Wow.
I thought we did something wrong.
That's cause you got a march for me.
Good evening, city council officials. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, council president. My name is Cheryl Bellinger Murphy, AKA Cheryl D.B. Murphy. I'm the founding president of Jersey City Caribbean Carnival Association. We are preparing for our 19th annual Caribbean Festival Parade scheduled for Saturday, July 26, 2014. I extended invitation to all. I am proud to say we are part of the fabric of Jersey City, the West Indian Caribbean And I can truly say that for the last 18 years, we have had an incident-free event down at Exchange Place. Carnival is a celebration of freedom, a day for the entire family to celebrate, from newborns to 100 years plus. It is our rich culture, truly an asset to tourism. Most of the parades here in Jersey City truly serve a community service, and they are all culturally greatness in significance. Jersey City is truly the United Nations. I have seen our community change over the years. I remember growing up in Jersey City when Exchange Place was nothing but the Jersey City dump, the make-out lane, or broken fences, or just debris all over everywhere. Now Exchange Place is Jersey City's gem, a wonderful waterfront skyline with New York City as a backdrop. And it was also created to be utilized for summer events for the whole family and all city residents to enjoy. It is truly an outdoor space for family and community. As I stated, Jersey City is the United Nations, and we always like to acknowledge it verbally. So I say, instead of acknowledging verbally, let's live it. Let's make Jersey City truly the United Nations and keep our rich cultural heritage, festivals, and parades alive and well. I thank you for your time, and I also hope you come and join us, July 26, 2014, when Jersey City comes alive with the Caribbean culture. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mary Ellen Liddy. Liddy. Kristen Green. Kristen Green is here?
Kirsten.
Sorry?
Kirsten.
Okay, we have just Kristen.
Kirsten.
Kirsten.
Yeah, K-I-R-S-T-E-N.
We'll transpose those letters and make the correct for you.
Green has an E at the end.
Okay, three Es from green.
Green has a green.
Good shape.
So the abatement, the 20-year abatement for Ninth and Brunswick went through?
Uh-huh.
First reading.
It was a first reading.
First reading. So I just wanted to comment on that. There are various incentives, right? So he has a 1.5% of gross instruction that's supposed to be given to Jersey City youth jobs, improve or expand off-site prioritized community or recreation facilities, or construct off-site educational facilities. I posted about this to several community boards and to our block association, and the unanimous feedback was they want to make sure that that money stays in Hamilton Park. How is that going to happen? Is there a legal document that's going to say that?
So just to let you know, I don't know why my mic isn't working. So just to let you know kind of where we are as a council, the intention of the executive order is good. It's a little bit vague in terms of actual distribution of funds. That's something that we kind of all recognize. We think there needs to be a balance as a council. We've started having the conversation to say that because the majority of development is happening downtown, if with every time there's a buy-up, all of the money stays downtown, it kind of defeats the purpose of being, you know, one Jersey City. However, so what we've talked about is dividing the funds up equally between the wards for every single abatement, and then creating kind of like a bucket, right? So there's a warty, you know, fund for parks and warty. And my commitment has been to make sure that those funds from that go to Enos Jones Park. And there is another thing coming up with the bonus units, which is that the bonus unit money for Phase 2 of that project is supposed to stay in, it says green space in the area, is supposed to be like immediately around it, so that would be going to Enos Jones.
That's going to be designated for Enos Jones.
That has to be by the way the redevelopment plan is written.
Yep. So I wanted to comment on the development in general because it's gone through various redevelopment plan proposals that have not gone through right now. I believe he's still building as of right. And back in September, Candace had asked me to reach out to our block association, and there was a lot of concern over who would be part of that vote and how that vote would be conducted. So I just wanted to present to you tonight because, you know, I don't want to be written off as like, oh, you know, we don't know how that vote is done, and we don't know, you know, who's really voting. So I wanted you to just see that every person that voted had to sign their own sheet that clearly spelt out the differences between the two proposals at the time. There was a current redevelopment plan that Schuster bought into. He knew what he was buying at the time, and there is a proposed redevelopment plan. Forty-three of 49 votes were for the current zoning, the zoning that the developer purchased. That's 87% of the people of my block association voted for the current zoning. And it didn't matter if there was a school, it didn't matter if there was more money. What matters to my community is the height and the density that is continually being pushed into Hamilton Park currently. We're really concerned that there's a discussion of a Phase 3 of this project, a project that has gone through many different redevelopment plan requests, each time pushing the sellable square footage and ultimately the profit for the developer. The community wants to keep Hamilton Park low-rise, low-density, and using a sample statistic from a block association, one can see that 87% is by far the majority here. We're tired of being threatened. Okay, but she took some of my time. We're tired of being threatened from incoming development projects, and the city planners keep sending bigger and denser projects to our community with no respect for the zoning that the people living there now expect to continue to exist. That's why we have zoning, not so that it can be changed on a whim, but so that it protects the character of a neighborhood. I honestly don't think the city planners are actually planning for a whole city. They're approving projects that are shoebox rental apartments, and typically, people do not get married, have children, and stay in a shoebox rental apartment. They look to leave. Regarding the Lefrac development on the 10th Street and Bankment, there was an amendment that just came through. I'm under the impression, or I'm under the understanding that an amendment does not come to the city council? Was that clarified by any chance?
An amendment to what?
The amendment to the Lefrac 10th Street and Bankment project.
It depends what, if it's a change to the redevelopment plan, we have to vote on it. So if it's a change related, not related to the redevelopment plan, we don't vote on it.
So for me, it's related to the redevelopment plan because the redevelopment plan clearly states that this building should be a maximum height of 70 feet. The proposal that was shown to us March 5 at the Hamilton Park Neighborhood Association meeting was 75 feet with an additional... Regarding the Lefrac development on the 10th Street and Bankment, there was an amendment that just came through. I'm under the impression, or I'm under the understanding, that an amendment does not come to the City Council? Was that clarified by any chance?
An amendment to what?
The redevelopment. Amendment to the Lefrac 10th Street and Bankment project.
If it's a change to the redevelopment plan, we have to vote on it. So, if it's a change related, not related to the redevelopment plan, we don't vote on it.
So, for me, it's related to the redevelopment plan, because the redevelopment plan clearly states that this building should be a maximum height of 70 feet. The proposal that was shown to us March 5 at the Hamilton Park Neighborhood Association meeting was 75 feet with an additional 10-foot structure on top to house machinery that he wants to move from the first floor to the roof, because he doesn't want to remove units. He just wants to give himself an extra gym and daycare center. The other disruptive thing to most of the community is that he's removing the dog run that was long-promised to the community. And for me personally, I think something that really makes the neighborhood feel like a neighborhood is the grassy strip in front. I know it's something so small, but when you make the entire sidewalk concrete, it is so stark and lacking any feeling. Like, you know, if he could just give us back the grassy strip, that would be great. So, there it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dean Creedy? You're Dean Creedy?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to talk today. I would like to talk today. So, first of all, I live in 77 Hudson, and I would like to express some of the very tremendous deterioration of the quality of our lives due to music, unlimited music levels, and the frequency of street festivals that are happening in the Exchange Place area. Not the festivals themselves, I stress, but the levels of music and the frequency. I don't believe that there is any rule that curbs the noise level and the frequency. So, in theory, you can play music so loud that it could reach the moon, and you can play it every day of, every weekend in the summer. So, this is a huge problem for us, because as the person before me, Sherry, just mentioned, it used to be, and perhaps an industrial area, but today, things have changed a lot. And in 77 Hudson alone, you have about 500 households that live there. Most of them are young families that have kids and hard-working people that go to the city and work very hard weeks and very long hours. So, this is robbing the quiet and the calm and the peace that you can get over the weekend to recharge your batteries and go back and work. These families have kids, some of them newborns, so they are also deprived of sleep, and they look forward for the weekend to rest. So, what I'm asking for is the council to consider setting. I know that there has been, Councilwoman Osborne has worked, and I thank her for being responsive on some changes there, but without limitation on the sound levels and without limitation on the frequency, let's say, it's incredible how loud the music is. Even inside our apartment, the windows closed, and 77 is not that close to Exchange Place, it's impossible to live. And it has happened in last summer that, for example, two weekends in a row, every day of the weekend, that was the case. So, it's unbearable. I just would like the council to address that. Couple of things also that, I've been told that there is no way that we can limit the noise, but I did find this on my way two days ago. This is on Manila Avenue and at the exit of 78, Lincoln Tunnel towards Jersey City, that says boomboxes are illegal and they cannot be played on the streets. You're subject to a fine and imprisonment even. And still, there is no limitation of sound. I found that a little bit contradictory. So, my suggestion is to, if there is no way to curb the sound because of any reason, to find alternative ways, for example, to limit a lot of the time that music can play and give disincentive to these festivals to play extremely loud music. Or to relocate to other areas that are very nice, plenty of parking spaces, such as Liberty State Park, and which, where you can get also by public transportation, not just by driving there. Thank you very much.
So, just so you know, it's an issue that, you know, we've been working on, and we're trying to find the right balance, because I think historically, you kind of view Exchange Place as being a business area, and I think we do recognize on the council that there are a lot of people who live there, and so there needs to be a balance between that and also something that's very important to all of us on the council, which is our cultural diversity and celebrating the fact that we are one of the most diverse cities in the country. So, we are going to have a meeting on February 21 at 7:00.
March, March.
Yeah, the year flies by. March 21, which is not this Friday night, but the next Friday night at 7 o'clock, we're going to have people from the parades as well as the community here, and we're going to talk through what the solutions are. There's some things that we can't do from a legal perspective, but we're going to see where we land out, and so I would encourage you to come.
Unfortunately, I cannot attend, but I hope that you can represent us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Norrie Straymaker. Mehir Abu Bakr.
Abu Baker? Abu Bakr?
Ann McGovern. Abraham Abraham. Hassan Amay. Kenny Reyes.
Kenny Reyes. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. For over 70 years, I've been commuting from New York City to my home on the Bergen Avenue bus, and I walk off the Fulton Avenue, and towards my right is the Fulton Avenue Park. And I've seen, year over year, season over season, the abandonment of that park. Now, I have been completely guilty of that, because I haven't actually voiced my concern or put anything into action whatsoever. There are wooden benches with, whether it's granite frames falling apart, chessboards that are ingrained on concrete tables are falling apart also, graffiti written, no lighting, bushes just growing everywhere. And right now is a time where enough is enough. Now, throughout this whole night, I've been listening about ordinances regarding the importance of the Bryant Lane Park, which is true. And I've been hearing about tax dollars that are either earmarked or want to be earmarked for the development of the Berry Lane Park. And I understand that if executed properly, it will be a jewel of Jersey City. But what we cannot do is turn a blind eye towards small-size, medium-size parks such as the Fulton Avenue Park. Now, it's very important that this park actually starts to come back to life, and we need proper investment to go into this park. Reason being is because families that live within that vicinity can easily attain that park as well. And that park has enough space that it can rival any kind of small, mid-sized park within Jersey City. Now, we have a park on Bergen Avenue, yes, and then we have the potential park that's going to come on Berry Lane Park, but this one is very important. What's happening is, there's groups of people are congregating in that park that are doing illegal activities there, and we just have to stop that. There are children that go there, there are elderly people that actually go there as well, there are family people that go there also. So, there has to be a vision to get this park back up and running. We cannot just let this completely just fall into the cracks. So, my concerns and my asking is, if Berry Lane Park is a priority, which it is, this park cannot be the last or the penultimate on the list of priority of parks, because we need the adequate funding necessary, not second-class funding at all. And another important feature regarding that is that any kind of investment within that park, when it comes towards tax-appropriated dollars, must flow into the hands of the people that live there or the people of Wardell Falls, so they desperately need that kind of investment, whether it be general laborers to remove debris or do any kind of construction. So, I highly, highly state on the City Council to put this on your list when it comes to the importance of revitalizing this park. And I am referring to Block 24903, Lot 16, which is known as Fulton Avenue Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Barbara Camacho? Barbara Camacho?
If I can just say briefly, thank you, Mr. Reyes, and thank you for your input, and we'll carry that, your input into the conversations as we talk about the prioritization of the funding. There's no need to.
Thank you very much.
Barbara Camacho? Phil Carrington?
Greetings. Phil Carrington, known to many others as Brother Phil. One said good evening to Council President LaVaro, members of the City Council, and to my councilman, my white councilman from Ward A, Frank Gudjuski. I'm very pleased with Councilman Gudjuski. You see, let me stick on this here for a moment. Peter Brennan was a councilman for 20 years. I've never been able to get a call returned from him or meet with him. This guy wasn't here for the last 20 days, and he returned my call. The issue that time was Stevens Avenue on the black section from Ocean Avenue to Kennedy Boulevard West have not been paved when Brennan was there, first came, for 10 years. He had not returned a call, have not fixed it. 30 years now we are counting, and the street have not been paved. Now, Gudjuski didn't promise me that he was going to pave it. He can't promise me that, but at least he heard us, and so we want to give credit where credit is due. I had a problem for years with the food industry, with the food truck. Brother several times have not been able to get, not one black politician to touch the issue. Steve brought the issue up, raised the issue, and then, when the last law was passed, it still didn't affect me properly, so I raised it to my councilman, and he returned the call. What he seems to do is not raise a lot of noise or as loud as a lot of people would do, but he used to be a police officer, and he does investigation and he get back to you. I kind of like that. And for a white guy, I want to give him credit where credit is due.
I'm going to interject very briefly, Phil. I know you mean it as a compliment, and so, but he's just a good guy and a good councilman, so.
Time will tell. Maybe he's just doing it so I wouldn't talk about him badly, but he's doing his work anyway. It doesn't matter. Ordinance 140025 is a very serious devastating ordinance, and I didn't want it tonight to be tabled, to come back again. I want it to be dismissed, you see? And I'm, again, I'm very pleased that even come before the City Council. This is what I've been speaking about for years. This is an illegal law, and as good as I have a good-talking relationship with you, I have an open-door policy with Councilwoman Coleman, and a good-talking relationship with my councilman, but if any one of you sign that I don't hold politicians so close that I won't sue one of you, any one of you vote on that law, I'm going to put a lawsuit against you. It's just that simple. Why am I raising this? Because this is the same law that I was speaking about for years. See, no one really understood, because it didn't affect them. It is illegal, because they stopped zoning. What they did to me is to make a law between Fulton, between Woodlawn Avenue and Dwight Street, just to put me out of business. It was made devious. Now, and the issue with the, what's the councilwoman, what's her name, the councilwoman right next to you?
Andy Sarisborn?
Yeah. It's not bad on her part, because the council, because the members in her neighborhood, they're asking for this. But it is the same thing. She's doing it pro and good. Thank you. She's doing it for the people, and to her credit, that is good. But it is indeed devastating to carnivals and other people who look at it quite differently. Now, if they got a problem with the noise level, close your windows or go and play bingo somewhere else. See, you just can't be so self-centered, because you don't like our music, to let us disappear. I had a problem also, a similar problem with the topside land in the building that I bought. LaVaro told me, buyers beware, so I'm stuck with it. And so, the white people downtown, they're stuck with the different cultures of black people and Latinos and whoever else, so buyers beware. You have a good condo, whatever it is, so be it, but we ain't going nowhere. And so, if you sign this into law, you can place it under the ground, you can bring it back or whatever. If you make it a law, I'm going to sue every last one of you. That's my word. I'm Phil Carrington. That's my viewpoint.
Mr. Carrington, that's why I, we talked about this, and we tabled, and we have a meeting on the 21st at 7:00 p.m. in the caucus, Council Caucus Chamber, so you're more than welcome to.
My time is usually bad, but I'm telling you, if I'm not here and it's still passed, tell Osborne and the people downtown, I'm not playing.
All right. Thank you.
I'll sue the last one.
Thank you.
Matt Shapiro?
He's ready.
Council President, council members, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Matt Shapiro, and I'm president of the Hamilton Park Neighborhood Association. I'm also the father of three children, all under five years old. I know that as council members, you have little official involvement into whether or not the PS-37 Cordero Annex is made available, again, for use by PS-37 for the next school year. But as we all know too well, the work of a council member is a lot more than showing up here and saying yea or nay. One thing that I know many of you do is advocate for the needs of your constituents outside of this room. That's why I'm here, in fact. It's uncomfortable for me to have to come here and publicly disagree with people I support and with whom I almost always agree, but it is necessary, because the residents in our community require advocacy on their behalf, and it is incumbent upon us to act in the best interest of the people we represent. There was an excellent article published today in the Jersey City Independent, which explains the details of the difficulties between the administration and the school board as it pertains to the PS-37 Annex and other pre-K space around the city. So, I hope you've read it or will read it, because the devil is indeed in the details. Right now, the PS-37 Annex at 189th Street is home to four classrooms of three- and four-year-old pre-K students. The building is owned by the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency and leased to the Board of Ed for $1 per year. When the administration began negotiating on behalf of the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency for use of the space next year, it became clear that more money would be required than the $1 currently paid at the BOE was to keep the space. So, the BOE made an offer to pay $1,300 per student to the JCRNA for the 2014-15 school year, which is 10% of their per-student cost received from the state for use of that space next year. This is money that comes out of books, teachers, salaries, programming, and other classroom resources, but the school board and Superintendent Lyles feel that it is worth the cost in order to keep small children in their own neighborhoods for school rather than bus them to other neighborhoods. There is, of course, also a cost associated with busing students, which is north of $1,000 per year. All comes out of classroom programming monies. The administration has not responded to this offer. What the administration has been doing is making comments in the press, suggesting that school board members only care about downtown. The reason the administration is saying these things seems to be that the administration wishes the BOE lease an additional space on the former site of the Duncan Projects, which has not been built yet by a private developer. Now, the BOE has made an offer to lease that space as well. Again, the administration has not responded to their offer. The administration has also said that if the city is going to subsidize one space downtown, it must subsidize one space uptown, and there's nothing wrong with that. There's a lot of good to be done in every neighborhood in the city, and it should be done, and we need pre-K classroom space and all classroom space in every neighborhood. But the JCRNA still has debt service on the PS-37 building totaling $750,000 or $850,000 per year, and the fact that the Board of Ed is not paying the total amount for that debt service means that they are getting a subsidy from the city. The problem with that logic is, though, that the city would still owe that debt service anyway. So, the taxpayers pay either way, and that school will sit empty while three- and four-year-old children are bused to other neighborhoods while a dynamic, vibrant, successful school is closed and sits empty. Is this fairness? Does the administration really feel that Dr. Lyles, a single mother with 40 years of education experience and the kind of bona fides that most of us can only dream about, would be looking to favor downtown over the rest of the city? That would go against everything she has ever done in her career. We must recognize the possibility that the people best suited to making decisions about the education of our students are the qualified educators currently leading our school district. Please, council members, do not let this school be closed. Even if the administration is correct, and it's the BOE's fault that all this is happening, please don't punish your constituents, your three- and four-year-olds, and your parents for it by closing their school, because the parents who can afford it will just leave the district, take their kids to private school or Catholic school, or move to private school or Catholic school, or move somewhere else. And the three and four-year-olds who are left to be bused all over the city because they have no other option will be the exact same children the administration is trying to protect. Please use whatever resources you have to stop them from closing this excellent school. I mean, who ever heard of closing an excellent school? Has anyone ever heard of that? There's enough agreement on the fact that this city needs more space in pre-K, in elementary school, in middle school, and high school. So let's go forward. Let's keep this school open, and let's figure out how to open more schools like it. Please advocate to get these parties together to solve this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gilbert Moore. Gilbert Moore. Kabili.
This is public speaking. Good afternoon. I'm here to basically just, um, raise some concerns about the project employment and contracting agreement, which is better known to many as the PEC. My concern, uh, basically is from, uh, hearsay, and I want to say that upfront, but I'm going to ask these questions. If the project employment and contracting agreement is being amended to strengthen it and put more teeth in it, I will quote Congresswoman Diane Watson when she said to President Clinton, "We definitely want to strengthen affirmative action, but we do not want to dismantle it." My concern is that there's a lot of language, again, hearsay, that the Jersey City Employment and Training Program is being incorporated or integrated into the project employment and contracting agreement. I urge the City Council and the administration, not out of theory, not out of subjectivity. My concern comes out of coming into this process in nineteen ninety-seven and helping to develop an ordinance and a unit that did not even exist. It was an idea, it was a discussion that came out of the defeat by a judge of what was then known as the First Source Law. The only thing that the judge told us very clearly before I took that responsibility was that there was no disparity study that showed that there was any, any degree of sexism or racism within the internal structure of Jersey City or its external structure, be it contracting, be it employment, or be it union negotiations. Five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars was finally spent, and that disparity study was done. And the only thing that needs to be done is that it needs to be ratified by this body. The other thing is that there are things called violation notices. Too often, whenever developers or general contractors were not in compliance, instead of them receiving violation notices, they were excused, um, by our law departments for the things that they had committed. I'm raising these things to you as not criticisms against what may or may not be occurring, but there is a critical need to open this up to the community, to open this up to people who have an understanding, a historical and institutional understanding. If you exclude me, bet. I'm not talking about Kabili Tayyati. But there is no need to begin to trash something that has not only historical value but legitimate legal value if assessed and analyzed and amended correctly. In one minute, I then come to what I've raised before. Governor McGreevy and I have a good relationship. The Jersey City Employment and Training Program is a six-point-eight million-dollar federally-funded program that has specific regulations, mandates, and guidelines for it to follow. It must carry that mandate out. It cannot be supplanting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Berg.
Are you passing, Jason?
Oh, he's not here. Trying to fix my shirt. That was how to scratch. Jason Berg, I'd like to, uh, like to see the twenty-four-seven ordinance that was supposed to go into effect on oh-three, oh-three fourteen to be done explicitly, that we can't afford another killing in our one-hundred-unit buildings. And that's very important. I'd like to thank Frank Gajewski for the time that he's spent talking with me on issues. I appreciate that. And any other council person who has given me a return call, I appreciate it. Again, communication is the key to salvation for our city. Without recognition from the citizens, there is no consent of government. Now, the other issue is, now, in the Mayor Phillips State of Union address, he did address hearing and seeking people to be involved in a community. Well, I sent this council and the mayor, twenty-seven points. Half quiet, please. And I've been trying to sit down with the mayor since June, and I don't think that's good. I have nothing, no hidden agenda. I say what I mean, and I mean what I say. Again, I don't wish to hurt anyone. I just want to see my ideas recognized. On the issue of, I've said this before, um, the bonds and oaths. Each one of, uh, anyone who is an elected official in the state of New Jersey or any state has to have a bond and an oath. Leagues can be put against those individuals if they are found to be violating a person's amendment or other issues. Please stand true to your oath and the Constitution and the people that you represent. And when you question the establishment, the Federals, you can be considered an enemy of the state. That's been going on for some time. And I really think that's outrageous since we think we have this opportunity to have freedom of speech. But again, individuals who have been in the armed forces and policemen, or known as oath-takers, are now considered domestic terrorists, along with people who use the word patriot, constitutionalists, and other positive words. We need to stop those kind of things going on. Now, I am also the National Libya Alliance Chair, organizer for the state of New Jersey. On this March the fifteenth, we're having eight states be constituted in Avonel, New Jersey, that's A-V-E-N-E-L, at, uh, one-twenty-eight St. George Avenue in that community. It's from four to six PM. Anyone in the states of Hampton, Orange, Middlesex, Sussex, Passaic, Warren, Mercer, and Union are invited to attend. The states will be reinstated. On the following week, we'll be at Perkins Restaurant in Moorestown, New Jersey, an exit four down in Camden County. Those counties will be Burlington, Camden, Glasser, Salem, Cumberland, Atlantic, and Cape May. The object of the National Libya Alliance is to create our, re-establish a common law grand jury and to bring back truth, justice, and fair play to our courts. I am, I've seen the abuses of, of Judge Rogers against Pauline, against Pauline Roman. I find violation of First Amendment, Fifth Amendment rights, and even the Seventeenth. With that, as the common law grand jury will convene soon, we are not looking to make a witch hunt or have victims out of nothing. We can challenge anyone, and we are separate to ourselves. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council members, we're, John Thera, I think his name, but I think he's left. Okay, that's it for the speakers list.
Robert, before we proceed, Councilman Rivera, wants a big motion.
Fourteen, that's four day, and a free day? Okay.
I'm in three D.
Uh, Councilman, this was a four-to-four, it was defeated, it lacked a fifth vote. If your desire is to change your negative vote, is it your desire to change it from a negative to a positive vote? Okay. So, three D has then been introduced by a five free vote, voting no councilperson, Yoon, Osborne, and Coleman. Okay, you have that on the record? We're on the record with that. Uh, council members, let me just catch up a moment. Paperwork here. I'm sorry, I'm a little hindered. Thank you. All right, we're to the claims and addendum number one. Councilperson Gajewski.
I got the Y. Oh, there he is.
Frank. Can I see the claim? You have claims in addendum? Can I see yours?
Claims in addendum number one. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchall.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajano. Councilperson Yoon.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera. Council President.
Aye.
We have an eight-zero vote for the approval of the claims and addendum number one. Council members, ten A is a resolution introducing the calendar year 2014 municipal budget. Public, official public hearing will be Wednesday, April ninth. We'll insert into the budget language that it'll be advertised in the March, March twenty-eighth version, edition of the Jersey Journal, Mr. Kackleski. March twenty-eighth version of the Jersey Journal. So when we, tomorrow, you and I will be-
Robert, Robert, is that part of the council meeting or separate from?
No, that's going to be, uh, part of the council-
Part of the council meeting.
That's going to be part of the council. I know the council president was talking about additional public hearings, but the official statutory, statutorily required public hearing will be on April ninth. Uh, stay tuned, we may have more information for you about other meetings.
Yes, correct.
Okay? But the official meeting for the public hearing on the budget is Wednesday, April ninth. All right, we're to the resolutions ten A through P. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano. Yoon.
Aye, but I'd like to mention to ten E, actually, this is short to people of Jersey City, taxpayer of Jersey City. City Council tried to working for the better affordable housing trust fund status, you know. This is a very good actual resolution. I hope our taxpayer aware that, you know, how the council working for, uh, better for Jersey City.
Okay, councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
LaVara.
Just on the budget, to be a, uh, we'll see, I think there was a request for salary information and things of that nature. And when will we expect that? Early next week? Okay. And just for, again, just to reiterate what Robert said, the view in public, April ninth is the public hearing, and then the council will conduct two other community meetings or unofficial public hearings, looking at dates, scheduling those dates and locations, and additionally departmental hearings, um, that are also open to the public. And all those, all those meetings and hearings will be publicized. I vote aye.
Ten Q through ten Y, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano. Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
LaVara.
Aye.
Seven eight zero, Q through Y, Z through Z four, councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano. Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Osborne.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye. LaVara. Aye.
We have an eight-zero vote for ten Z through ten Z four. Could I have a motion to adjourn at nine oh-two PM?
What?
I'd like to motion.
We just voted on it.
Councilman Yoon.
Second.
Second. I'm sorry, no.
Rivera.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Osborne.
Who adjourned at nine oh-two?
Folks.
No, no. Robert.
Went by a little too fast for Councilwoman Osborne.
What happened?
Bike share.
Uh, it's approved.
The bike share.
We need Dominic to say anything?
He's here, so. I, I, I did have a couple of questions.
Okay, Councilwoman, go ahead.
Dominic, if you could take the microphone? Thank you.
So I got to read through what you sent me this morning, um, but I, there was a couple of things that weren't in there that I wanted to understand. One is the pricing model.
Yeah. Um, I think the pricing model is in the RFP, which pretty sure is included in the packet. Um, and-
I didn't see it, but just if you could-
Okay, yeah, sure. It's, uh, the first thirty to forty-five minutes, we have yet to decide on what that's going to be, is free. Um, then, you can't hear me. So the first thirty to forty-five minutes of every ride is free for members. Um, then after that, there's a two-dollar charge for the next hour, and then, uh, a, I think it's an eight or ten-dollar charge for, uh, every subsequent hour. Um, a yearly membership is, we're hoping around ninety dollars. But again, this is all going to be negotiated as the, as the details of the contract come together, so.
And then, lastly, where the location's going to be in Wardy?
Uh, the locations are, uh, still, um, some of them have been decided. They're the obvious ones, uh, pass stations, light rail stations, uh, near shopping districts. But we're working currently on a-
Resolution.
Uh, a tool to allow residents to vote for areas, um, online, and that way we can get some community input. Obviously, the final decisions are going to be made by engineers, uh, taking into account things like traffic.
I would like to be included in that decision since it's all in my ward.
Sure. It's actually citywide.
Dominic, just we add-
It's in every ward.
Okay, but isn't the bulk of it for phase one in downtown?
Uh, we, we don't know.
Or did that change?
No, I mean, we really, we really, like, I don't want to, I don't want to say where folks are going to be yet, but, yeah, you can definitely be involved.
No, I'm just, I'm just talking about the map that you showed me that said it was
for phase one, it was downtown Hoboken and Weehawken, and then the rest of the city was going to get another phases.
Right.
Is that still true?
Yeah.
Okay, so for that part, I'd like for you to-
Sure, of course. You're included, you're in.
But we got to make sure that when they set up the station, fairly evenly share with, uh, not only downtown, other part of Jersey City.
Yes, yeah, every, every part of Jersey City will be represented. There-
Yes. You know what, which say, above Newark Avenue?
Above Newark Avenue.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, of course. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council members, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn at 9:05?
Second.
Councilwoman Rivera, seconded by Councilwoman Coleman.
Yes.
Say goodnight, everyone.
Goodnight.